Okay, here we go, all present and accounted for. Good to see everybody. I would like to officially call this committee of the whole meeting to order for Monday, August 7th, 2023. Good Clerk Burlingley, please call the roll.
Commissioner Deckard.
President.
Commissioner Hess.
President.
Commissioner Hoffman.
President.
Commissioner Juarez.
Here.
Commissioner Prado.
President.
Vice Mayor Cooney.
President.
Mayor Anderson.
Here. Thank you Clerk Burlingley. City Manager Ritzma, are there any communications?
Nothing, Your Honor.
Thank you, Manager Ritzma. Now is the opportunity for public comments during our committee of the whole meeting. Just a reminder, public comments at this meeting are limited to two minutes, unlike our business meeting where we allow three minutes. You can either provide public comments here in the chamber, or you can call in with your public comments. So we will start this evening. Is there anyone in the chambers who wants to take advantage of this public comment period? Just a reminder, this is an opportunity to express anything you'd like to do to the commission, but it's not an opportunity for dialogue. So, anyone who is interested, yes, please.
My name is Glenn Hawkins and I live on 814 Reed Avenue, and I'm coming as a concerned citizen, as well as an active member of the Building Blocks Association, and somewhat of a volunteer at Edison Neighborhood Association. So my concern is like, three or four points, and they all have to do with Reed Avenue. One is the 53-foot semi trucks that travel that street continuously. They create potholes. I got like, six potholes in front of my driveway, which causes me extensive front-end damage and repair work. It also causes the home, my home, other homes, I've talked to them, the phones, the homes rattle, literally, when the trucks drive down the streets. Thirdly, they speed. They speed continuously, and we have them on film, Mr. Captain, we have them on film, speeding early in the morning hours. Fourthly, they create traffic jams. I've got pictures where they don't even park to the curb side, they park, or they're not parked, but pull up and travel. And so the cars coming east off of Portage, they have to detour, or, you know, we just have a traffic jam. Let's see, I think that's about it. Oh, and fourthly, and thus that's fifth, there's a state, it's supposedly a state traffic route for them, but we need to get that changed. And then another thing is, the street, Reed Avenue, is not stated, or slated, slated, S-L-A-T-E-D, slated to be paved until 2029. And the street's terrible, again, because of the potholes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hawkins. Just so you know, you're two minutes up. Thank you. Is there anyone else in the chambers that would like to take advantage of the public comment period? Please state your name, whether you live in the city. You'll have two minutes. Seeing no one else in the chambers, oh, all right.
Hi, my name's Linda Cross. I live in the same place as Glenn Hawkins, and I just wanted to finish since he only had two minutes, and didn't have a chance to mention about the speeders. It's not the semi trucks that speed so much as just cars, and sometimes it looks like they're drag racing down the street. There's a lot of kids on that street. We really don't appreciate that. And we would like to get some speed bumps sooner than, if we're not going to get paved in the next few years, we'd like to be able to get some speed bumps, maybe one of those signs that tells you how fast you're going, or something like that. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers like to take advantage of this opportunity? Seeing no one, Deputy City Manager Chamberlain, has anybody called in for this meeting?
We'll go ahead and check here. We do not.
Thank you, DCM Chamberlain, appreciate it. Manager Ritzma, we're down to the work session portion of the committee of the whole.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two items on this evening. The first is an update on the Kalamazoo Blueprint for Peace. As you recall, we had a committee of the whole meeting maybe a couple months ago, and the desire of the commission was to have guests back and give a more detailed dive into the peace project. And so I'm going to turn things over to our chief operating officer, Laura Lamb. She'll introduce our guests.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Commissioners. As the city manager stated, we do have some guests here today. I'd like to introduce Jen Haymas, again, Vice President of Initiatives and Public Policy with the Kalamazoo Community Foundation. She is joined by Andrea Minema Macklin, who is the Associate Director of Community Impact at United Way of South Central Michigan. The city manager also stated, we had Jen here in June, and she had a lot of information to cover and very little time to do it. It was at a business meeting, and several of you commented how much of a priority that you've all stated, that gun violence and eradicating it, reducing it, preventing it, is a priority, and therefore, we want to make sure we take the time to dive a little bit deeper. So Jen's going to give you a brief update of where we've been since she's been before you, how priority actions have emerged through some extensive conversation with community. Andrea is going to provide an update on the current efforts being funded through the city stimulus dollars for Community Violence Intervention, or CVI, kind of where we are in the process. And then they'll be talking a little bit about next steps. As you might recall, there was a million dollars allocated to gun violence for reduction and prevention. Half of that was allocated into Phase 1, and we want to talk about some potential next steps for Phase 2. So with that, I'll turn it over to our guests.
Welcome. Nice to have you here.
Thank you, and thank you for the time, so I don't have to shove all of this information into 10 minutes. Appreciate it, and appreciate the table, so that we don't have to stand and trade at the podium. So, the purpose of what we'll cover, and I do hope that if there are questions as we move, you can interrupt at any time, so we can have more of a conversation. We don't have to talk so fast this time, although that is my habit, excuse me. But I'll just review the journey that we've taken. I have an update on where we've been since we last met, including an overview of the first phase of the CVI grants that Andrea will be doing, and just talking about the prioritized action steps, which we didn't have when I presented in June, and we do have those now. And then Andrea will review a funding proposal for the second phase of the CVI grants. As always, I just want to start with thank you to folks across Kalamazoo County. Many of them are in the room today from every... This hasn't been just the Kalamazoo Community Foundation. There have been stakeholders, leaders, folks involved from grassroots all the way to institutions, folks who are in building blocks, and that was represented just in public comment. Like, there are people who have been involved in this from across the county from the beginning. So just a thank you to those people. A reminder, yeah, thank you, of the public health approach. And I know we typically show the cradle, public health approach graphic. This is more simplified, so I just wanted to give this to you as we go through where we are right now. We are really looking through this plan at prevention, intervention, and healing. Intervention and healing have been happening throughout the summer, as we have lost more lives to gun violence. Prevention is where we are looking with the public health approach. All of these things have to happen at the same time, so it's not like we can do prevention, and intervention, and healing at different times. So I just want to note, too, although we're talking about a long-term approach, we have groups who are on the ground, who are really working on the intervention and healing right now. And our role in this is to convene, to coordinate, and just to provide capacity for this work moving forward. I know it can sound repetitive when I talk about a long-term strategy through a public health lens, but I find that it helps to just talk about it a lot, so that folks understand that we are looking at upstream prevention. We know there are immediate needs around coordination and the flow of resources, which is what we're talking about today. And we know that no one or two organizations, leaders, or programs are the answer to community violence prevention and intervention. It takes all of us, and you'll see throughout the strategy that no one is specifically named, because it takes a lot of different groups to do this. I want to state, too, this does take time, relationship building, and coordination. So, action steps might state work that's existing, and work that needs to be lifted for resources, and I'll point that out as we go through. I'm not going to, if you can just click through, Andrea, thank you. I'm not going to go over this whole two-year, or over-two-year timeline. What I do want to just note here, and I'm going to pass it over to Andrea, is that in October of '22, along with all this other planning that was happening, we had that closed round of ARPA funding dispersed through the city and county partnership to infuse frontline organizations with resources to combat gun violence. That's not typically in the presentation, but I just wanted you to see how that fit in with the whole scope of this work that we've been doing. And before I go into where we are currently with action steps, I do want to pass the mic over to Andrea, so that she can discuss that first round of ARPA funding with you.
Thank you. So, as a reminder, the city and county partnered together to allocate a million dollars, so $500,000 from the city, $500,000 from the county, through a closed round of applications, which means that those applicants were invited to apply. They were chosen by the city and county commissioners. We ended up dispersing $793,000, because there were a few programs that just didn't line up or were funded in other areas. So some of that funding was held back for a Phase 2 process, and you'll see that represented in the proposal. So just as a reminder, $793,000 was granted out in October of 2022 for a two-year grant term. So we are about three-quarters of the way through the first year of that grant. So that's, any outcomes that you see will be as of June 30th. That's the last reporting cycle. These agencies were selected by the city and county commission based on the violence intervention work that the organizations are already doing. Again, this was urgent money that we wanted to get on the ground to infuse the work that was already being done. And the plan was always for Phase 2 to be more strategic, based on the action steps of the blueprint. If you want to go ahead and, oh, listed here are the organizations that were funded. Two of them were funded directly through city funds, and one received county funding. We really just split that up to make reporting easier on everybody. There was no other reason that they were allocated that way. I have been reporting as a whole. So when I report to our city and county administrators, they're receiving reports of the full process. So they're receiving outcomes from groups that were funded by the city and groups that were funded by the county, just so that you can see the whole picture. Urban Alliance, oops, sorry. Urban Alliance is operating their Change of Status program that is exclusively county-funded, and they are providing supportive services, wraparound services for returning citizens to prevent future violence. That's been their focus. It's a very big program that I don't have time to explain now, but that's the 32nd version. Help Through Navigation, we actually have a representative here in the chambers as well. They have provided wraparound services for victims of crime, including assistance with funeral expenses, which has been a huge need this summer. As we all know, it's been even more than expected. And we found a way to cover that through the ARPA funds, so I'm very grateful for the city employees, Carrie in particular, and the consultants too, for helping me figure out a way to do that with the ARPA funds. And then Isaac, also represented in the chamber, they've been focused on deterrents, street outreach, and violence interruptors, but again, have been willing to meet whatever needs come up. So I do want to just lift up all three of our partners. They've been working long hours, doing very hard work. This is the most recent report. Again, this is cumulative, so as of June 30th, the total amount spent is $297,492. The annual grant amount was $396,500, just for your reference. So this is where we're at in the first year. Outcomes have included training and trauma support services for frontline employees doing the hard work of violence intervention. We've wanted to make sure we prioritize that. We also saw a high demand for safe lodging or relocation after a family was impacted by gun violence. As I mentioned, with the help of city consultants, we were able to find an eligible expense category to allow for assistance with funeral expenses, which has been an unfortunately high need this summer. As you see here, we prioritized, again, that urgent, direct support for Phase 1, and you'll see in our proposal for Phase 2, maybe some more aspirational projects will be included in the eligible expenses, so. Any questions before we dig into the most recent priorities?
Any que, no questions, question? I have a question, roughly, without getting deep into specifics. You had a total amount of $793 that had been allocated, roughly, how across the three organizations, is there a way that that is, without getting too much underway here, were you going to mention that? Is that equally split across each three, or there?
It's not. We don't generally release the specific allocation amounts. It's something that I could send to the commission via email if you'd like. We just do that out of respect for our partners, that we don't release the specific amount that each organization gets. And if you have any other questions, feel free to email me. I'm happy to talk about ARPA all day, but it gets a little weedy, so.
Okay.
She's very good at it, too. All right, I wanted to update you on where we were with priorities, and what I, and prioritized action steps. So I just wanted to, again, look at our, the time and the amount of people who have been involved. So, since just January of 2023, so that's not even the work that was done in Phase 1 of this, we have convened community members for about, at least, about at least, 80 hours. We have 146 contributors, and that's from individuals to groups. So within one contributor, you might have like, five people. So I don't know the exact amount. I can count on our large spreadsheets, but I wanted to raise that. And then we have 215 programs and organizations that were named by community members. Some of the people who were named were not in the conversations, and their work is so well-known, that they were named by people in the community, just to say, don't forget that this group is also doing this, even if they couldn't send someone today. So, this is where we are today. We have the six goals and 28 strategies, which I've talked about a million times. Many of you have heard it many times. The 93 action steps, and that's what I shared with you at our last meeting, and what the ones I shared with you were all the youth-focused action steps. And since then, we've gotten down to 28 actions prioritized for the first three years of implementation. Within the 28 action steps, 17 are high priority, and the other 11 were things that have come up that could be aligned with work that all of you value, folks at the county level value, and then some things that funders have talked about. They were identified as, like, first and foremost by community members, as things where it's like, okay, if we can't find something in these 17, let's look at these 11 for the first three years. So, under Stop the Shooting, Stop the Violence, these are the prioritized action steps. The ones that I, some things to highlight in this list, under number four, decreasing illegal gun activity, you're not going to see a prioritized action step. And what I want to say is that doesn't mean that's not happening at the state level. We're involved in those conversations as part of our policy agenda, and it's moving at the state level. It's just not something where locally it was identified, because a lot of this is state-level policy work, and some, and some national and federal policy work. So, I wanted to just highlight here, if it's in italics, it's one of those additional 11 that people said, hey, there's already work happening here. This is important. If there's interest in funding this, we should do that. So I want to say that here. What you can see here that has arisen as one of the most important pieces is data, which we know, and we also know the relationship building that it takes to get to very transparent data conversations. So, those, number one, and the two action steps under number one are part of the work that we're doing with the Upjohn Institute. We're talking to folks at WMED. We're trying to look at what our data backbone looks like. As we move into the first three years of implementation, we're also going to be working with our coordinating council to say, what are data points that you know from your expertise on the ground that we need to measure moving forward? So, yes, we don't have a full data backbone plan laid out right now, and we, and we wouldn't, because we are working in partnership with several different groups to look at what that means. And the relationship building that comes along with this can often take years, and we're two years into that. So I don't want you to think that the relationships for data sharing are starting today. They, this has been going for two years. The other thing I wanted to raise that has really been lifted, and there's a lot here that intersects, but the strengthening, the capacity and alignment of local community violence intervention efforts. I know that Commissioner Juarez has been in a lot of those conversations, and that is something that is part of capacity and coordination. So it's not just, again, you know, putting funding towards something that's important, but it's the capacity and coordination of that work. And that is happening with partners on the ground all the time. So I just wanted to raise that. On to the next one. So I wanted to just illustrate what action steps look like in action for you. So you just have a better idea of how we got to this prioritized list. What we did was, we looked at all 93 with a large group of community across three different meetings, and we said, okay, of these 93, for the first three years, which of these leverage existing resources and capacity right now? What has political will? So what have you heard in your sphere of influence? What have you heard from our community leaders that they would be behind as we move forward? What has community will? So you know from listening to the people in your neighborhood, to the people at your organization, we have to focus on this for the next three years. And then what complements other local efforts and interventions? So that was the lens through which we prioritize those 93, just so that you know what we asked folks to think about. And again, I talked about the data transparency and accountability. What it looks like in action is, we're refining data points for the first three years of implementation. We're working with the Upjohn Institute and other partners. The strengthening capacity and alignment of local community violence intervention efforts. Just an example of what that looks like in action, we're talking with KVCC, Urban Alliance, and other partners on what a CVI academy would look like for our region. And this would be the first in Michigan. It wouldn't just be Kalamazoo County, but it would impact the entire region and anyone who accesses KVCC. So those are starting conversations that we're having. We have a CVI curriculum design team who will be meeting for the first time in August. As I say all the time, my whole life is the collaboration. Like, I would never sit with KVCC and say, this is what we need to do just based on what I know from the last two years. We bring in people who are doing this work to talk about what they know is needed, and we're looking at what the curriculum looks like. As, in a lot of ways, that's workforce development. That's also looking at professionalizing the field of community violence intervention, and it's establishing something in a piece of professionalizing this field that doesn't exist right now in our state, and nationally doesn't exist in many places. The last thing I wanted to raise for this one is the community awareness of those transformative practices and diversion programs for youth and adults. So I know that this commission is very focused on youth, and I just wanted to share that this has become a focus, especially over the last year, with existing groups. And they're working together to build out what youth diversion looks like, youth diversion and pre-diversion across the county. So, again, it's already happening. It's one of those things where it complements other local efforts and interventions. It leverages existing resources and capacity. There is political and community will. So I just wanted to show you what that looks like in action, and that's what I'll do for the rest of these as well. The increasing access and building capacity for healing and community restoration, which you've heard about many times. If we go to the, what has been prioritized, again, you'll see if it's in italics, it's because it was not part of the main 17 that were prioritized for the next three years. And what you'll see, again, is the increase in coordination of mental health and trauma services across agencies. So it's, this might not necessarily, as we get into conversation, be about resources, monetary resources. This might be about coordination to better support families. If you look at that fifth one, under the strengthening restorative practices, that, again, is a piece of what we're talking about with diversion. If you can go to the next slide. So, just another example about how a lot of this ties together, and what it looks like in action, like, that one example from the last slide ties to existing work from Goal 1, around increasing the community awareness and use of transformative practices and diversion programs for youth and adults. So it's difficult sometimes to separate all of these out, because so many of them are tied together. And that's also why our community members chose them as action steps that needed to be prioritized for the next three years. Supporting children, youth, and families, you'll see how this was prioritized based on what I first presented to you. This is what the community has lifted for the next three years. And you'll see the building access to high-quality and no-cost early learning supports and facilities. That's a conversation that you all are having already, and people are having across the county. I wanted to lift as well, and I've, I've heard it in our new KPS superintendent's presentations, really talking about that continuum of alternatives for school suspension, exclusion, expulsion, and zero tolerance policies, that, again, if you're looking at intersections, emphasize diversion, restoration, and inclusion, rather than exclusion and punishment. If we can go to the next slide. So I just wanted to say again, what does this look like in action right now? Our coordinating council is just coming together. We're still talking about what data looks like. And I just want to say again, that if we look at just one of those pieces, PULSE is in planning stages for recommendations for the region, and the city of Kalamazoo has been heavily involved in those conversations. And y'all committed $190,000 over three years to expand access to childcare through TriShare, which is beautiful, and just shows that ARPA is not the only answer here. We have to think about other ways to support this work, and you're already doing that. In cultivating economic stability, if we can just look at what's been prioritized for the next three years, again, under number two, you'll see the intersection between what was named in, in three, supporting children, youth, and families, around providing access to resources that support stabilization in employment, housing, childcare, which we just talked about, and transportation, which has an intersection with all of these. I wanted to go, again, to what that looks like in action. So, just again, ties to existing work from Goal 3 around building that access to high-quality and no-cost early learning supports. And I'm sure that with conversations you might be having in other committees, or conversations you sit in, in your own positions across the community, there are already projects that are leveraging existing resources and capacity. that are leveraging existing resources and capacity that complement other efforts and local interventions that tie into this goal and strategies and prioritize action steps. In fostering safe and strong neighborhoods, I wanted to lift at the bottom, those are the two that were prioritized in this area for the next three years, but the ones in italics are ones where it's like, people are already doing this, so we really need to lift this up. If you look at the promoting neighborhood revitalization and addressing physical blight and nuisance properties in priority areas, including working with landlords and the city, those are conversations that I know people who are employed by the city are having already with neighborhood associations, groups like Building Blacks. What I wanted to lift here is where it says priority areas, that's part of the data work that we're doing and looking at transparency and how we share data. And that's one of the pieces that will be better defined in these data partnerships. So we know that we try to align priority areas with the SPK, like those zip codes, and then our own grant making. And we want to make sure the data matches for priority areas, what that looks like. And we are working on that right now. Again, I already lifted this about the neighborhood revitalization, but it's an ongoing conversation that's already happening and a focus for collaboration and coordination can come out of our coordinating council if we have the right people who are guiding that work. So that's why, as I'm reaching out to people to say, hey, you're already doing this. Do you want to be on the coordinating council? It's not just bring your project and tell us your updates on it every month. It's what are we doing? What is happening already? Who can collaborate on this with you? What do you need for stronger partnership? And what does resource sharing look like in this way? The last one, we did not prioritize because all of these are already happening. So the coordinating council is happening. That building a staff and community violence intervention strategy that looks at recruitment and training for community violence interventionists, that is happening with Goal One. Bringing funders together to align strategy and long-term goals, that's happening. And the healing-informed approach to violence prevention, we're talking about that because of the public health approach that we're taking. So again, the evaluation capacity and accountability ties to Goal One. We're doing that already. And so I just want to raise, like, all of this is just keeping us focused on staying laser-focused on what it means to build capacity and coordination and not saying, okay, we have these 93 action steps that were named by community, we have to do all of this in three years, which would never happen realistically. I wish it could, but that's not where we are. So what's next? I talked about, if you want to click through, the building the data backbone. We are looking at coordination. And just to be clear, we were supposed to hire someone to take over this work and it will still be me. So you're stuck with me for a little while and I'm happy about that because I enjoy doing all of this work with everyone. And then implementation and funding. So what does that look like? What new projects will arise that have been gaps? And those are all identified in the longer documents that I have sent forward. I just want to stress before I pass it over to Andrea to talk about this one piece of funding moving forward with the next round of ARPA dollars. ARPA is a tool in the toolbox. And even if we were to put together a funding strategy, and this is something we're talking about right now, where every organization that is named, that's connected to any action step in what has been lifted, I'm working with our team to pull their general operating costs. What is every organization's general operating cost for the next three years if we were to look at, you know, what would it look like to cover that? So if you think about it in that way, ARPA is just one drop in the bucket of funding. It's one piece, it's a tool. And so my question, just to start thinking about this, is what does funding look like for this coordination and collaboration in perpetuity? I don't know the answer. That's something we're talking about as we come up with a funding strategy. It's something just that I wanted to raise before I turn it over to Andrea to look at what this next round could look like for you all.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Jen about the blueprint before we move into the more specific funding proposal?
Questions, commissioners? Commissioner Hess?
First of all, Jen, I'm glad you're going to be with this project for a while because you're good at it. Is there a, is there going to be like an online document with like a score sheet kind of thing? Are we going to continually be updated? How are we going to know that this is all happening?
That's part of the communication strategy that we're working on right now. So we need to get our year-one implementation and data points set first and then we'll put those online so that people can access them. So I don't have to keep coming to meetings and trying to get a lot of information into a little bit of time. But thank you for that question.
Other questions? Commissioner Juarez?
Yeah. So I know this work is very challenging and then the dynamic of, you know, the context you come from and the position you're, you know, leading. And then you look at the dynamics of, you know, people on the ground, organizations that's been doing the work for years and, you know, how that connects together. What are two or three challenging things that you see that are important for bridging the gap between what you do at the foundation, what individuals on the ground do in intervention work or, you know, outreach work or service-provided work? What are, what are some things there that you see that have to get figured out?
That's an excellent question that I could talk about for a long, long time. But what I'll say right now is, I think what is important is to first say that folks who are on the ground, who've been doing this work for a long time, are very passionate about this one piece that they might hold and hold a ton of knowledge about and are very good at doing. And it's bridging a gap of that piece and being able to work with, with a person who has a bird's eye view, who is really like trying to say, hey, like where is capacity needed? Where is coordination needed? And I'm not coming in to say, we need to start a whole new organization, let's go. It's to say, yes, you are very good at this one piece, but what does it look like to expand that support? What does it look like to think about collaboration with another group that's doing the same thing? Not in battle for funding or thinking about, like, okay, well, if I, if I have to share work across organizations, like then I lose something. That's something we talk about a lot. It's not about loss, it's about what can be gained through partnership. And you don't have to share every piece of your work with anybody. I don't want to do that. But it's saying, like, where can we have some movement so that next summer, we don't have the amount of gun violence deaths that we had this summer? And the next summer it's less, and the next summer it's less? Because we're all working for the same thing. And I think it's just figuring out, like, what that looks like for collaboration to not be transactional, which I talk about all the time. It's not just like, what can I get from you? What do you get from me? But it's transformational and that's hard. And that's what, that's what it is to do this work. And I think it's just coming back again and again to be willing to have the conversation. Thank you for that question. It's a really hard struggle for everybody.
Yeah. No, can you explain the importance, because you mentioned something about relationships and kind of, you know, we're like two years in and we're seeing this stuff, you know, happen from the context that you bring it from and kind of your perspective and point of view. But could you speak to the, to, so that people could have, like, an understanding of how important relationships are, given there's past things that we got to deal with, right? And then there's moving forward, like the importance and the severity of those relationships and that people keep coming back to the table and having those conversations?
Yeah, I think I could use, well, Chief Boyson's here, so I could use him as an example. When I first met with him about this work, he was an assistant chief. We, it was two years ago and we didn't know each other at all. So it wasn't like I could go to chief two years ago and be like, give us this data, we need it to identify priority. Because, you know, it takes time working together on a project, getting to know each other to get to a point where I can say, do you have any information on like what data could look like? And we can have a real conversation about it and figure out, okay, what does this project look like? What's the scope of time that we're going to need? What does data sharing really, what does that look like moving forward? So two years ago, when I first sat down with Chief Boyson, that was not going to happen just because of like, not because we're battling anything, just because we didn't know each other. And I think that's a lot of, to bring in our work that we do with Truth Racial Healing and Transformation, which is another initiative that I lead at the Kalamazoo Community Foundation, so much of systemic change work is based in this healing work, healing conversations, relationship building, and narrative change. And if I would have stuck with the narrative that I had been raised with and experienced myself with how I interact with police, I never would be in a place where I can work with him the way that I can. And a lot of that is that, again, that racial healing work, even though people are like, don't talk about racial healing, I will because I think it's a really important piece of this type of systemic change work. We can't have systemic change have, if we can't have racial healing work. And just another example of that, two years ago, I wouldn't have been able to bring folks who are on the ground doing this work to Lansing to talk to our representatives because there's fear there, like, I don't know how to talk to a politician. How am I supposed to do that? And I think that in relationship building, it's just having a trust to say, you know, we can do that. Let's, let's try it. Just try it, even if you've never done it. Like, here's how you tell the story. This is what that piece of civic engagement looks like. So again, we are not insulated in Kalamazoo County or the city of Kalamazoo. We really are becoming a statewide model for how we look at collaboration and relationship building. That is noticed by the, by our state legislators because of our relationship building. So those are two very different examples, but I think they illustrate an answer to your question.
Yes, thank you. How, explain to us how important it is to see the collective impact? Because sometimes we see some of the work you're doing, right, in the data collection and that bird's eye view and where you can fit in in certain areas, but then how does that translate into what you do is so important that you do it well? And if you don't do it well, then the Gwens and the Dr. Charleys and the Estos and the Bs suffer, right? So I really want to know, like, your heart in that collaboration effort? Because I think a lot of times, we misunderstand, like, where we're coming from or where this passion in our heart is coming from, at the same time fostering all that to get something done, right? So the collaboration piece, like the collective impact piece, like, how important is that? Could we do it without you? Could you do it without us?
You probably could. I just don't know if you have time because you're doing all the work that you do, are doing on the ground. So what, I mean, I'll say what I said earlier, which is like, I'd keep showing up even if people are like, get out of here. I'm like, I'm here again, hello. So, and I'll keep doing that because I live here, I've lived here for a long time, my kids are being raised here, like, this is work that impacts all of us, whether folks know or understand how or not. Like, each of us plays a part in this. Even if you don't have violence that happens on your street in front of your house every day, it could be happening in a house on your street and it could become that because of those intersections of, for example, domestic violence and gun violence. So I don't mean to be hyperbolic with that example, but, you know, I'll keep coming back. Collective impact is all of this. It can't be, again, one person, one group, it's all of us are responsible for this.
Thank you. And I just have a statement. I think that's super important that we realize that in this work, that there's not just one thing being directly impacted when it comes to gun violence. It comes to restoration in relationships. It comes to, you know, the organizations that are doing the work and, you know, that, giving that credit and support to those people. And so there's many layers and facets to this work. And like, gun violence ultimately, ultimately is our priority to stop gun violence. But in the midst of that, we find ourselves having conversations that are difficult because there's restorative stuff that needs to happen, especially in, you know, systemic racism, in fair inequality pay, and all kinds of different areas. So a lot of these conversations need to happen to see this outcome. And I think you, you said something about timing. We're two years in and sometimes we, we see what's happening right now with the amount of young individuals who've been killed in the last month, right? That, it, we carry that burden, we say, whoa, is, what are we really doing, right? And the process of change in making that happen is going to either come from, like, and somebody once told me this, Esther, you want to go fast, go alone, right? I'm like, yeah, right? If you want to go far, go with others. So we got to unpack what that looks like going with others. Regardless if I have an expertise in this certain area or I understand this from my context, doesn't mean it overrides the understanding of somebody who's been on the front seat or in the front line doing the work or in, up here doing the work or in the county. It's collective. And I think that, that's important for us to see that collective impact takes time. And with time, change will come, right? And so I just appreciate the work that you're doing and the work that others are doing in the communities, right? Just a couple just here, Gwen and Charley and Tammy Ray and Boyson and, you know, just individuals who are pouring their hearts out, like, you know, Pastor James Harris and Alejandro and Bee, and there's, there's so much being done, but bringing it together is the challenge, I think. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Juarez. Other questions at this time? Vice Mayor Cooney?
Yeah. Thanks so much for what you guys are doing. You're doing great, wonderful things. And thanks for all the people that are here doing the great work on the ground. So I'm hearing you say that priority is building capacity and coordination. So I'm wondering, are the people that are working on this, are they coming together? Are there regular meetings where people are coming together to talk about what's working? What are the gaps? What do we need to do?
So just like every phase of this work, we're building that right now. And it's a lot of phone calls, Zoom meetings, coffee, lunches to say, this is what this looks like for the next year. And do you want to be in it? Like, that's, that's what it is right now. So, and it is, this piece of it, the steering committee, it has to be people who are currently on the ground, who are working on projects that are related to the prioritized action steps. So that's what a lot of the outreach has been for the last month and will continue to be for the next month. And then we're hoping to start these meetings in late September, October, monthly. And if you, if you've been in a meeting with me, you know, we're going to get something done. It's not just going to be updates from every group on all the things we're doing. It's going to be, okay, here's the goal of the meeting. What is happening now? Do you still want to be in this? What are we doing? What's our next steps? And then what are our follow-ups? And then holding people accountable to what they say and then we move to the next month. So that's what it will look like moving forward and I anticipate that we'll start that in the fall. We got pushed a little bit with some of our transitions that we're going through and not hiring that person who will be carrying this forward. And that is me, like I said, and I will be having those convening meetings moving forward.
But I'd also want to lift up, some of the groups that are on the ground doing the work do convene, you know, and they do, you know, figure out some of that stuff too. So you got a group with Dr. Charley and, and Tammy, myself, and Gwen, and some other organizations that are working to figure out what that looks like working together, right? So those groups are, are still convening, right? And, and so that's important to kind of, you know, uplift and think about too, like, stuff that's happening behind closed doors. Yep.
Thanks, Commissioner. Commissioner Decker?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you guys for all the work that you do. And I'm just kind of piggybacking off of what Commissioner Cooney says, you have all of these organizations and all these people coming together. How is the youth playing a part in that? Are they at a specific table or are they at a table and saying their ideas? How are you incorporating them into this when we talk about, you know, decreasing, as Commissioner Juarez says, the deaths of our youth?
We need youth at the coordinating council and that is part of it. So we have our spreadsheet of everyone who has come and the organizations that engage youth. And again, if you've worked with me, you know that we need to involve youth voice in what we do because if we don't, it's just a bunch of adults. We're like, let's go. That, that connects to building out a CVI strategy too. We can't just have people who are doing community violence intervention work who are in their 30s, 40s, and 50s. We need folks who are teens and in their 20s doing that. So there's two aspects of youth involvement here. One is on the CVI side and I know that folks like Dr. Charley are doing that with the groups that are meeting who are on the ground now. And then in our group, it's just thinking about, okay, as we go long-term, you know, who is a youth who wants to be at the table for to be at the table for these conversations with the action steps that name youth? Because if we have only adults on the action steps that name youth, then we're not, we're not fully involving everyone in the community.
Thank you. I just, you know, a thought kind of popped into my head about when you talk about finding the youth, you need the youth. We have put a lot of money and a lot of backing within our Kalamazoo Parks Department, and these are programs that are designed to help keep youth busy and active. So maybe some kind of, you talk about collaboration and coming together, speaking with the KZ Parks and Mr. McVary and seeing, you know, "Hey, can we come and, you know, kind of tone it down a little when you're talking to some of the kids, but can we do a presentation, or can we come and sit and chit chat and see, you know, what youth might want to, to take part in this?" Just, you know, another avenue to finding, you know, our, our youth to, to join the, the group.
Yes, thank you for that. And they were amazing when we did that first round of listening session, so it'd be great to go back and talk with them. And the other piece of it is when we're talking about suspension and expulsion, and one of the action steps that was lifted up for the next three years, that means we need to talk to youth who have been suspended and expelled, not just youth who are already in every advisory council, who are involved in 20 different activities after school. And you know, if you talk to me, this is something I talk about all the time, we need to talk to youth who have been impacted. And some of youth who have been impacted are in a lot of those groups, and there's not enough, there's not enough.
Commissioner Juarez?
Yeah, so again, like, one of those things that I think about, like, having that bird's eye view of like, 30,000 feet, right? You see all the components. You see all the, like, I was at camp, my kids went to camp up north, and my wife was, me and my wife went, because we had to pick up my daughter, and she had this puzzle, spread it out, and every piece had a, just a significant shape. And every piece had a significant color, and it belonged somewhere on that puzzle piece of 1,000 pieces, right? And we're out just putting the borderlines on, right, finding all the ones that have the borderline. So, because that's easy to identify, right? Right? This is very simple. It's got a flat backside that goes on the border, right? So we're, we're doing that, and then we start to look at all the different shades of greens and blues in the puzzle, and we're like, "Oh, damn. Like, how do I figure this out now?" Right? Because they're very close and similar. So when you think about all the puzzle pieces within this context of gun violence, you have many people working on youth. You have Alejandro. He just organized a march against gun violence with youth, who are marching through the streets yelling, "Hands are meant to heal, not kill," right? And seeing that is dynamic, right? You got Gwen Hooker, who has JABs, who's doing things with youth, who experience these things in the schools and in different places. And so there's a lot of different puzzle, puzzle pieces, and they all look similar, and some look, you know, just a little shade off, and figuring out how to make those pieces fit in, right? And identifying where to put ones that look similar and where not to put ones that don't look like, don't look like each other, right? And so I think even in, in the work you're doing, Jen, is, like, how do you tap into what's happening? Yes, we need to create a youth voice. How do we tap into that? How do we tap into that in what we already have in terms of puzzle pieces that we can place together right now? What fits together, right? And we, and it's, and it's having those conversations. It's figuring that out, and I believe you're doing that, right, and inviting the right people to the table to have those conversations. Like, when we did the, the emergency call, and we had people just, like, "I want to work on that. I want to work on that." We need more of that organizing, right? Getting people in committees to work together on certain aspects. And so I look forward to that work.
Thank you, Commissioner. Well, I know, Andrea, you have some, some stuff to dig into here, right, as well, so I want to make sure you have time to do that, so I'll get back to that.
I do, but these are important questions, so happy to, happy to wait. Mayor Anderson, to get back to the question you asked earlier, that data is included in the reports that I submit to the city and county, and I'd be happy to resend that to Laura, and she can distribute it to the commissioners, so you can see that.
Thanks.
Okay, so, as you can see, you should have a draft proposal in front of you. You might notice that the, the total amount of funding there is highlighted. That's because that was just a placeholder number. There are a lot of moving parts right now. The county literally just last week pushed through some emergency funding for funeral assistance, so that number is TBD, but it is over a million dollars if the city and the county choose to move forward in a partnership for Phase Two. If the city chooses to move forward on their own, it would be 557,000 that's remaining for Phase Two, just for your information. So as this has been a partnership from the beginning, I moved forward assuming it would continue as a partnership. So everything that I am going to state here is assuming that the city and county move forward with approximately the $1 million of American Rescue Plan funding that was previously set aside for a second phase of violence intervention grants. Utilizing the Blueprint for Peace and the allowable expenses under the state and local fiscal recovery funds, expenditure category 1.11. Carrie at the city and I, we sat down together and determined that there were 13 action steps in the Blueprint for Peace that were well-aligned with ARPA eligible expense categories, and we included those in the draft proposal. So we've narrowed it down to those 13. Those would be the ones that would go out in the request for proposals to organizations. If their work aligns with those, then we would consider them for funding. I'm not going to go through all of those with you, but they are in your, in your draft proposal. Back to what Commissioner Juarez was talking about, without collaboration, we don't believe this work can be done. And in order to encourage that collaboration, as well as alignment with the community priorities, and an equitable allocation of resources, we at United Way would strongly recommend an open grant process for Phase Two and a funding term of two years. So we know that this work takes a long time. We can't expect a turnaround in a one-year grant process. And we also know that while we needed to move quickly with a closed grant process for Phase One to get money on the ground, if we want to really start making a dent in these action steps, we need an open process where we can hear from new members of our community who aren't already at the table. The proposed timeline, if you were to move forward with a vote in the next, either this meeting or the next meeting, would allow us to open the application in mid-September, and that would have decisions announced early December, and funding would begin January 1st. So that would keep us on the same reporting schedule that we're currently on with the city and county with those quarterly reports coming in. I strongly encourage you to just take some time to look over the draft proposal. If you have any specific questions about the eligible activities or anything like that, I'm always available to speak with you. One other thing that I just want to highlight is that in conversations with our partners at the Blueprint for Peace, as well as with city and county employees, we've decided that we really want to prioritize and incentivize collaboration. And so you will note here, under eligibility criteria, it is not an eligibility criteria, but priority may be given to proposals with documented collaboration between two or more community organizations. We just think that that's really the, one of the most important steps to get this work done, is to do it together. So. Does anybody have any questions specifically about the funding proposal?
Yeah, thank you. Commissioners, questions at this point? Commissioner Pradel?
This is just a bit of a, more of a comment, but just kind of looking through the draft. Might cut off there. I'm just noticing a lot of barrier-reduced items in the requirements. I'm a nonprofit leader myself, and I know a couple things. Multi-year funding is huge for nonprofits, you know? Having that ability to anticipate what you're going to have for multiple years to continue to do the work, so that you don't have to worry about, come December 31st, that the work has to stop. Monthly submission of reimbursements and whatnot, that's huge. Quarterly reporting, that's going to help people as well. So I just wanted to give a shout out. I'm just impressed with, with those steps, because I think those will help a lot of, especially smaller nonprofits manage this work. I was going to just ask a couple questions as well. I didn't get a chance on the first chance, but just was going to ask you both, what, what do you see as the sustainability components of this work that you think will help make sure that this, this work can continue way beyond all of us and, you know, when money is available?
Yeah, I'm going to pass that to Jen, but I do want to reiterate what she said earlier. These ARPA funds were a gift, but they were a one-time gift. So we cannot rely too heavily on this as the solution. It's just one tool that we can use. So I'm happy to be a part of it, but I don't want to put too much weight on what ARPA can do.
I just have to shout out, working in partnership with United Way. It's been a pleasure all this time, and just look forward to continuing that. So thank you for all of your work on this, Andrea, and everyone on the team at United Way. Sustainability component, so I just want to lift, if you, if you look back at the slides where I said, "Hey, this one is already happening. This one, you're already allocating dollars to. This one, you know, it, it reaches across three different action steps." I think that's part of what our coordinating council really needs to think about. So what is already, what are funding streams that are already happening and will happen towards pieces of this work no matter what? Where are people looking for federal dollars? For example, there are federal grants that can fund some of the youth diversion work. What does the map of that look like? Which is why we're lucky to be in relationship with many nonprofits. So they're telling us, "Hey, there's already grants for this that people are applying for, so let's look at that." We also, as I talk about all the time, are such a well-resourced community, and just looking at the sustainability component as being clear, clear communication with other funders, and really saying, "Okay, here's one project that's coming out of this." You know, where, where, what organization does it already live at? What capacity is needed? And a lot of funders are already funding that, but it's looking at coordination across funders to say, you know, "What does this look like in three years? What does this look like in six years?" So that if all of us were to move to different positions, it would still be here, and I think that's part of what the coordinating council needs to do. But sustainability, I just want to raise again, there are times where I said this isn't really about resources, because some people already do this as part of their whole organization. It's more about the coordination piece and saying, "Okay, if this group is doing it, how do they work with this group that's doing this piece of it? How do they work with this group that's doing this piece of it?" So I think there's sustainability, not just with funding, but also with the coordination piece, if that helps.
That's huge. You know, one leg of the stool is kicked out, it still stands, right? And I think that's the, you know, the goal we want to achieve with it. The other thing that I was going to ask as well, you know, you've been doing a ton of work with folks in the community, but doing a lot of research with, with not just your team, but in coordination with every, with, with everybody else, but in your, your travels and your research and coordinating with everyone. Are there things that, that particularly excite you or that stand, are standing out as people who are, I should say, not people, communities that are doing this work, very similar to the Blueprint for Peace, that are incredibly successful with the work that they're doing? Anything that stands out in particular that we're applying, that you're excited about, or that maybe we're not yet, that we're aspiring to do?
Something that is extremely exciting to me, which might get in the weeds a little bit, but it's very exciting to me, is looking at, when we talk about sustainability, how we can influence policy, to look at Medicaid funding as being a source of funding for community violence intervention work, the same way that it is for birth workers. That's a conversation that's happened, happening nationally. There's a couple other states and different communities that have figured out what that looks like. So that's extremely exciting, and one of the best parts about it is that we are at the table for those conversations at our state and what that looks like, in partnership with communities like Detroit, Lansing, Muskegon. Oftentimes, I was just talking to Andrea about this, the east side of the state is lifted up as, "Okay, they're doing all of this work here." And, you know, the west side isn't really there yet. And we are actually there with a community strategy as one of the first communities in the state to do that. And it took us two years, where it took some other communities, maybe four years, to get there, because we learned lessons from other communities, and we're not just sitting insulated here. So that's one of the most exciting things, is how we're plugging in with other community violence interventionists, knowing that we have to take local context into account anytime we do something. So we can't do the same thing that Detroit is doing, and we can also learn from our brothers and sisters and siblings in Detroit that are doing that work. And I just, I think that's one of the most exciting pieces, is just really looking at collaboration across communities and not just saying, "Okay, this is what we're doing." That's why we called it the Blueprint for Peace, just as it was called in Milwaukee, because it was the framework for how we did this. And Milwaukee is in, I don't know what year, but they, every time I have a question or I've hit a roadblock, I've called Reggie in Milwaukee to say, "What do we do?" And the advice he gives me helps us get through to the next phase faster than it might if we had to struggle through the first time, because they did that.
Thank you both. Appreciate it.
Other questions, commissioners, at this time? All right, seen none. You have more?
Just one correction. Yeah. Sorry. Commissioner Pradel, thank you so much for pointing out that we have been doing our best to remove barriers. That's a personal passion of mine as a former nonprofit administrator as well. I just, you mentioned that it would be reimbursement-based. This grant, we are, we are not proposing a reimbursement-based grant. It would be paid upfront, and then the budgets would just be reconciled to comply, to comply with federal reporting requirements.
That's even better.
Yeah, yeah. Just wanted to highlight that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you so much. So I have a couple of questions, just clarifying for me. So of this initial 793, that was an award that was, is a two-year award. Is that correct? I understand that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. And so there will be, in essence, a year or a portion of a year overlap between that and the second round funding, correct?
Yes. If we move forward with this timeline, there would be an overlap.
Yeah. And this one point approximate that is mentioned, that Jen mentioned, is the, the same number as the 1.2 or whatever that you're talking about in your proposal? The, the last slide here, that in Jen's presentation talks about approximately 1 million of ARPA. Is that the same part of money you're referencing?
Yes, that's the remaining pledged amount cumulative-
Got it.
-city and county funding.
Okay, super. So, not to get too much in the weeds on it, so are, we're talking about opening an open round, and other organizations participating, not being a closed round as we did our first time, kind of invitation-based. So does that mean that organizations that were funded as part of the initial round, that would still have a year left, would not participate in the open round funding? And maybe that's too deep of a question at this point.
We have not discussed limiting them from applying. I would personally say, if they want to apply and their proposal is good, we would discuss that during the application process.
Sure. Okay, great. Because, all right, that, that's helpful. Just for me, just being out in the community a lot, having the luxury of getting to do that and, and going to wonderful events like the, the recent graduation event for the Bridging Opportunities Program, I am sometimes still confused about, well, who's funding what, and is this part of that? Is this part of that? How does that happen? Where did that come from? I don't, and, and there's probably more that you can get to that, than is good for this moment, but I'm still feeling like I don't really still have a good grasp on that kind of a big picture. And, and maybe there's, it's hard to get that big grasp. But do you have some thoughts about that?
I would say we all feel that way most of the time. Specifically, I believe the Bridging Opportunities was funded by an allocation directly from the city commission, from some ARPA dollars.
Right, yeah.
They were not funded through this process, because they were funded another way, not because we didn't think it was a great program, if that, if that helps.
Yeah, that does help. And that's what I, that's what I thought. So there's other, because it's going to be helpful to think that on the funding side, it's like, "Okay, we're doing this. This is a strategy. We have a separate request. We certainly want to make sure that's part of the strategy," right? You know, so that the whole big picture really fits together. For example, there was a recent conversation about whether there was adequate, I would say, sort of a flexible funding pot relative to addressing an immediate need of a family or a young person that's involved with the program and maybe having access to that kind of resource. And I wasn't clear whether that was currently available, or would that be one of those things that was, there was kind of a discussion about it would come through this process, outside of this process, or any other kind of good idea that comes up in the midst of everything else. So thoughts on that?
Yeah, I know Jen has something to say about that, as do I. This has been a, a puzzle. We've been putting together puzzle pieces. Just last week, we had a family that needed some help with funeral expenses, and it was, "Okay, can we find that through this funding? Can we find it through this funding?" And it's a lot of people working behind the scenes, trying to figure out what is eligible for what source of funding. And it's tricky, but sometimes enjoyable when we, when we figure out how to fund it. I don't know if that specifically is the family you were talking about, but I know Jen also had something to say about that. but I know Jen also had something to say about that.
Well, I think that just goes to, when they talk about, "We're a well-resourced community." And sometimes we are not great at the desiloing the work, which is why it feels exciting when Commissioner Pradel asked about that, like what is, what feels exciting about this, or like what's hopeful about this, is that when it's, when someone has said, "Okay, this is needed, we do have disaster relief dollars." And when he talked about that with our grant-making team, it is, "Okay, yes, there's this pot, but there's also this money that was already allocated. So, we need to go to what was already allocated before we go to the disaster relief funding." So, like Andrea was saying, it is a true puzzle of trying to figure it out. And I think the more transparent we can be about that, so that folks who are waiting to hear on the money understand, like, why it has to happen that way, because of the way our systems are set up and our society works and all of that. Like, I would love to be able to cut a check immediately when someone says they need assistance and give it to them. And unfortunately, I am in a system where we can't do that, Andrea's in a system where we can't do that. And we will do as much as we can and have as many conversations as we can to figure out how to do that utilizing the funding streams that are already available. So, if anyone ever wants to talk about ARPA with Andrea, she's a good person to do that with. But if you're ever like, "Where does this funding come from or where does this come?", like, you could talk to anyone on, on any of these teams at KZCF or United Way, or a lot of the other funders that are doing this work right now.
That's helpful, thank you. Commissioner Juarez?
Yeah, so I think one of the things that even this ARPA funding being new to us and figuring out, like, how do we, like, really make this make sense? And I think even in going into Phase Two of this, we have to think about how to structure that, right? So, that, that access of money can be accessible and that we have allocated. Because I think one of the biggest problems we had was like, "We need money to do something now." Then we, then people said, "We need money to make sure we sustain," or "Phase Two, Phase Three," right? And so, like, we, Laura did a really good job at this, so I just want to give, Laura, where are you? Oh, I just want to give you a shout out, because she's like, that's why I feel the pressure. I know we need to put money out there now. And we need money for building the capacity of what's to come, right? And so, I think we did that with, we did a pretty good job of that. In the initial request that you're talking about, that kind of draws that confusion, "Okay, Urban Alliance got some money for this, and then somebody else got some money for this, and that was really immediately." But then, we had this plan to figure out how to create these processes when it came to county and city dollars being spent, right? And so, part of it is that we have to create those pockets of, of resources to be able to be used for that specific reason, right? And so, having a pool of money or some dollars available for immediate need that doesn't fit the normal, this is the process, right? So, that's, that's one thing, and I think that's super important. Because the, the money that was allocated for funeral costs, like, is drying up, right? But we need more money for that. Now, we can make the decision to say, "Can we put money in a pot that says, 'This money will be used for things that are, that already had money allocated to it, but we need more,' you know, which is super important, right? It's super, one of those things that just, with gun violence, you know, it's, it's, when, when you lose a loved one, it's so hard to expect for people to understand systems when they're looking for somebody to care for them, right? And so, that's, that's a huge thing. And so, I say that because it just, it sucks to see that stuff happen, right? And at the same time, we have to educate our community to take the appropriate actions when somebody like Gwen offers life insurance, pay for a whole year to take advantage of that stuff, right? And so, it's like, it's the push and pull. And then, the second thing I wanted to suggest is that if we could find time at the end of this presentation to allow Pastor James Harris to come up and speak about Change of Status, and Gwen and Charle to give some updates about what you guys are experiencing, seeing, and allow us to hear directly from that portion, you know what I mean? Because this is great, I love this. This is awesome. And this is the stuff that has to happen in order for their work to be able to happen too. And that's the cohesiveness that we want to build. So, I would suggest that we find a little bit of time there at the end.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Juarez. Wrap-up comments, are you set, do you have a?
I just want to thank Commissioner Juarez, because these people out here are the people who are doing the work. And I would love for them to have a chance to speak to it. Jen and I do all of the details, but they're the ones doing the work, so. No, I, I don't want to diminish them, but, but I just, since they're here, it might be a great opportunity for you to hear about what they do.
Okay, I'm sure, I'm sure we're open to that. So, just a reminder for all of us, there was another agenda item on our committee of the hall agenda, which we may not fully get to, which I'm okay with, I presume everyone's okay with that. So, we'll see, once we finish this, whether we feel like we have a good enough opportunity to get to Agenda Item Two. So, are people generally interested in hearing from, okay?
Yeah, I have nothing else, except a thank you to everyone here who is doing the work and just to all of you for wanting to do a deeper dive into this. We don't off, I often, again, get up here and just talk really quickly for eight to 10 minutes, and I don't get to have this type of rich conversation. So, I appreciate that for the community to hear as well, like, what goes into all of this work. And on the funding side, just to again express that the more that we can share about what funding looks like, for example, federal funding is difficult. And if you've worked in nonprofit, you know, like, how the reporting looks and what the applications look like for that. So, there are very strict stipulations on that. When you get more flexible multi-year funding, that can be used for more creative ideas, like what Commissioner Juarez was talking about. Like, you just have to know the distinctions between all of those, so that you know, if you know how to work within that syst, all those systems, you can subvert those systems. So, that's something I talk about quite a lot as well. So, thank you for the time.
Thank you very much, Jen and Andrea. So, I don't want to put anybody on the spot, I have a feeling that people did not necessarily come here prepared to make a presentation, so don't feel compelled to do that. But if there is anyone here who's participating in this more broadly that would like to talk a little bit about their own work, I mean, certainly there's some time for that.
I'll put you on the spot. I don't know if Mayor Anderson will, but, well, you know me.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Juarez, appreciate it.
Am I on?
You're on.
Okay, good evening, everyone, commissioners, Mayor Anderson. I appreciate the opportunity. I want to start with just really saying thank you. This is something that was unprecedented, never been done, as far as actually allocating funding based off of a resolution that was a city and county-wide partnership. And so, we are very grateful. We do have the drafters of that resolution, which is myself and Tammy Ray, that actually drafted the public health resolution that kind of spearheaded this whole thing while we're here. Fast forward to the funding that Hope to Navigation got, which there's no shame in the amount of money that we got. We got $250,000 over a two-year process, multi-year. And we're used to, Hope to Navigation and organizations that are really small and grassroots are used to doing whatever it takes with nothing. So, to us, $125,000 was able to do some really amazing things for the community that we serve. The nuts and bolts, I know Jen and Andrea kind of broke it down, kind of a high-arching overview. But if people are used, are interested in kind of those specific details of where money was spent, it is in the monthly report that we submit. But just in general, we were grateful to be able to support about 17 folks with burial costs from last October, and it's, obviously, it's ongoing process. In addition to that, unfortunately, we were allotted money to, I think Commissioner Juarez mentioned, to educate and support families with life insurance policies. And it's a kind of a bizarre thing that I haven't actually been able to unpack, to figure out, you know, what is going on with that. But we've offered that assistance and that support to every single family that we've, that we've served in whatever capacity with that, with that funding. And very few people took advantage of that. And so, that is something that we really are going to strive to figure out and go into community where folks are and really, really try to figure out what is the barrier or what is the fear or what, what is going on, why people are not taking advantage of that particular resource, which we know that when someone in your family is killed by gun violence, the likelihood of that happening again is increased exponentially. So, they really, really should have coverage for their, for their, for the remaining people in their household. Other than that, I did want to just say, as far as, I know we talked a little bit about youth, and that's, that's really something that we at Hope to Navigation with our youth arm, which is Justice Against Bullying at School, like, that is to us the most important component that is, that is not there for a lot of organizations. And we are really being intentional about making sure that we are putting youth at the center of the conversation. So, all of the work that JABBS does, all of the work that is youth-related is led by, led by youth. It's led by youth, they come up with the initiatives, they come up with they, what they want to do, and they are actually on the ground doing the work. We are, the adults are really the people that just support them in whatever they want to do. Because they're, it's their peers that are carrying around tuning guns and killing, killing each other. And so, we want to make sure that we're giving them their voice. They're the most impacted, and they're also the most people that have the ideals and the solutions to the problem that they're facing right now. So, other than that, that's a real snippet. But just want to say thank you, thank you for all of the support. Hope to Navigation, this is our first federal grant. And so, it, it was kind of shaky at first with all of the requirements, but we kind of ironed out all of the wrinkles. Andrea was just, phew, I know she was like, "Look lady." But I'm, but I'm so grateful, because now we have, you know, we have, we have it kind of down to a science now, and it's actually been very, very, very learning experience for all of us. And we just really appreciate the opportunity to have been able to serve our community in this way. So, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, super glad to hear all that. Anyone else that would like to? Oh, Commissioner Hoffman had a question for Gwendolyn Hooker, is that right?
Yes.
Sorry, got to come back up.
Thank you, CEO, for everything that you're doing. I was wondering, out of the 17 households that you were able to serve with funeral costs, what was the average cost today of a funeral?
So, I will say, the average cost, just if I were to say a bare-boned, basic cremation, is about $4,200. And what we did is we, our budget is $2,000 per household for the actual funeral cost, because we know that at that time, Griffin Place also had money available as well. So, we knew there was no way that we would be able to cover the whole cost. But we do help with, like, if folks need funeral clothing, if they need to relocate, those kind of things. But about $4,200 for a cremation, and then if they actually are doing the burial and a full service, it's about $12,000. So, that's at the church with the repass and a burial, it's about $12,000. And that's a bare-boned, bare-bone cost.
Thank you for that. I just wanted to give some context around the amount of money that needs to be raised or to expend to help those families. And can you just share a little bit about having that conversation about cremation versus a full-blown service?
So, I know, I mean, I really appreciate the questions, because, you know, this is work that's not only, you know, passionate, we were doing, we've been doing this work for a very long time before the epidemic of gun violence kind of rose. So, it's a difficult conversation, because when people lose someone, they really want to have, you know, a casket and a full, you know, ceremony, a service, a funeral. And it gets to the, the point where you have a body that's in the morgue, and we have very minimal resources, and they really have to cut some costs, you know, and cut corners, which it's a hard conversation to have, because it's a tragedy. And they want to be able to, you know, give their, give this person the due respect that they, that they deserve. And so, it's hard, you know? And it's also a timing situation, because you really want to have a conversation about life insurance, you know? But it's a very precarious conversation, obviously. But most people, their first preference is, is to have a burial. It's to have a service where they, all of their friends can come and they can have the casket there and bury them. Unfortunately, those resources are not typically available, and so, they have to cut corners. And we try to give them a dignified way to show respect for their loved one without all of the basics that you would have if you had the insurance.
I really wanted you to lift that up, because I just went with that, through this with my own family. I lost my father at the end of June. And having that conversation with just family, with blood relatives, was very difficult. So, when I think about the work that you are doing in Gun Violence Intervention and CBI, those are the weights that the staff and the people who are on the ground doing the work, they have to carry that. And you can't put a dollar amount on that. And so, I just want to say to you and to everybody else doing the work, like, "I appreciate what you're doing, because those conversations are not easy to have, and yet, we have to live in this reality of, of limited resources." So, I appreciate you and just sending you all tons of love and light, because the work goes deeper than just, you know, stopping the violence, stopping the shooting. It is what happens, that ripple effect after a family has gone through this tremendous and this very tragic incident that's happening in our community. So, thank you for your service.
Absolutely, thank you. I'm going to just add just something, just as a point of reference, so people have an idea. When we talk about youth, and we had three men murdered in a six-week span. One of them had eight children. The second one had seven children. And the third one had four. So, just in three murders, we have all of those youth that are traumatically impacted by gun violence. And that's just for those three. So, imagine the parents or the youth of all of these people that have been killed by gun violence. And so, we really got to be intentional about not only the prevention of reaching people when they're young, as young as possible, as well as on the other side of that pendulum, making sure that we're providing resiliency and trauma-informed care to these youth to make sure that they get the help that they, that they need. Thank you so much.
Thank you again, quite a lot, appreciate it. Is there anyone else here who would like to come forward? Good to see you, my friend.
Well, since my friend Estevan put us on the spot, I guess I had to make a move. Man, first of all, you know, you sit in-
Just for the audience, can we have your name too, please?
Yes, James Harris from Urban Alliance.
Thank you.
Outreach manager, all right? You know, just by hearing, you know, all the different parts that's taking place in our, in our city, I'm blessed to be a part of Kalamazoo. And there is a lot of work that's being done, and I'm, I'm learning more and more about the work. You know, so again, Urban Alliance is a small piece of what we're doing, and COS is a small piece to what we're doing. But I have opportunity to work with some amazing individuals in Change of Status and also with Alejandro Rodriguez, you know, and Yofensio Harris is a part of our team. And now, Mike Monroe is a part of our team. And we've also just hired Rod Tucker to be a part of our team. You know, so COS has, has been an amazing journey, you know? We'll be graduating, I think, this Thursday. This will be 58 men that have went through COS. And you've seen so many of their lives actually changed, you know, through the curriculum that we offer, a 12-week curriculum. And then, also working with supports and recovery at Urban Alliance. You know, you're seeing barriers being broken down. But what we're finding out is 12 weeks is not enough for a lot of- is not enough for a lot of the men. We really need to extend to a Tier Two and a Tier Three. So we're seeing that we might need to, um, be with an individual for a total of approximately 36 weeks, you know, to see them actually change their status. You know, so, um, a- again, just, just having the opportunity, you know, to do that. And also, we're seeing that as individuals graduate out of COS, this gives us an opportunity to hire the participants of C, COS to assist us in continuing to develop the program. You know, so we have two individuals now, and we just call them Peer Navigators, and they were, uh, former participants of the program, and now they're pouring back in to their peers. You know, so with, with that said, um, you know, um, Thursday, we have a graduation at the Experience, and if you want to hear some amaz, um, amazing stories about men's lives being changed, you know, I invite the whole, um, Commission to, to come, come out this, this Thursday and check it out. If you can't make that, we invite you also to, um, some COS sessions, that you can just come in and actually see what's happening, hear what's happening, and, um, and, and, and allow yourselves to be seen, you know, um, within the context of what we're doing. So if you have any questions?
Uh, what time is the graduation event on Thursday?
It's at 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM.
At the Experience, 1:45 at, um, Farmers Alley.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Harris?
Um, Pastor Harris, when, um, and where are the COS sessions? And is that, is that available online? Where can we find those?
Oh, not online. Normally, the COS, OS sessions are at Urban Alliance, but what we're finding out is that, let's say for instance, is that we want to teach the men about financial stewardship. You know, we'll actually take them to a bank and have that session at a bank, right? If we're talking to them about changing a criminal mindset, we had an opportunity to take them to a law office to talk to them about that. So we try to set them up in an environment based upon the topic that we have for them, so the location changes.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Harrison, thank you for coming forward at a moment's notice, I appreciate that.
Good evening to our mayor, our commissioners. Uh, my name is Charle Davis, I am the Executive Director of Isaac. Uh, just a special thank you to those who wrote the resolution, um, Gwendolyn, and also Vice Chair Tammy. Thank you to you all as a Commission for, um, voting and in the resolution, and also sending the money over to United Way. A special thank you to Andrea and Jen and COO Lamb for all their awesome work. And so just a little bit, and again, I probably will come back at a different time, probably during public comments with more specifics for you all, but just a quick overview, um, for two years, uh, we did, we were awarded $193,000, so that's $96,500 per year. And so some of the funding has helped to support, uh, trauma support for those who are on the ground, and so a lot of times when we think about this work, absolutely, we need trauma support, which I'll talk about, for those who are in the community and have experienced gun violence right then and there, most definitely. But then also our on-the-ground folks, they are survivors, and that's something that we always have to lift, they are survivors many times of gun violence, and they also are in positions and doing work and being re-triggered, um, by the violence as it happens. And so that's really important to make sure that we are taking care of our on-the-ground team members. Also, um, we had some funding that went towards our Violence Interrupters and also, uh, street outreach workers, and so that's for Blocks Club as well as GVI, which stands for Group Violence Intervention. I want to talk a little bit about housing, because that's a huge thing, um, when we're thinking about gun violence intervention and gun violence prevention. And so we are usually the first line and the first call when someone has experienced gun violence, and they need either safe lodging, or they need rental assistance, or they need a relocation. And so when we're thinking about gun violence, you all, um, they're, they might, or clients might have had their houses shot up, um, they might have been shot themselves, and after they are, you know, discharged from the hospitals, they might reach out, and they might honestly need to get out of town immediately for safety's sake, that could be them, that could be their families as well. And thinking about safe lodging, that could be, and I won't say where, but different places where we need to place folks, where we know that they won't be found. Um, they might need to leave the city, they might need to leave the state, those are conversations that we have. And then also, as folks have lost loved ones near their homes, inside of their homes, sometimes it's really hard to stay in that house or that place of residence, and they might need to be moved either temporarily or permanently, um, as they are starting to move and walk through their grief. And so those are some of the things that we have been able, thankfully, in a, in partnership to help with. As we are thinking about, you all, gun violence prevention and intervention and housing, the same disparities that face us here, um, in Kalamazoo, Michigan, as we are trying to lo, relocate folks or move them around, please know that we experience those same inequities and those same barriers, and so it is not always the easiest, especially when we are trying to move somebody for safety's sake to another city, to get them moved with ease. And so I just want to lift that. There are often barriers that we have to really, really, um, work hard with families with so that they can get somewhere safe to live. Um, the last couple of things that I want to say, and I'll go ahead and take my seat, um, we have been approved as well to be able to help support the funeral and the burial cost, and that's already been talked about, there's just a high, high need, so I won't go over that anymore. Um, I wanted to lift as well, and this doesn't have anything to do with the, the monetary component that we have received, but I also want to lift that as we're doing this work, um, not only with our on-the-ground folks, but even those who are impacted, especially, um, our black and brown communities, we have really, have to give a shout out to the Synergy Center and also the Kalamazoo Empowerment. Um, they are our first steps for going and getting folks whatever, therapy, trauma support, whether it's racial trauma, violence tra, trauma, gun violence trauma, being able to get them that support barrier-free, um, whether or not they have insurance or not, that's been a really, really key part of this work, um, and that, that's going back even a couple of years. And so a special thank you, um, I have to always give Sister Lana a shout out for getting the Black and Brown Therapy Collective together, that's been instrumental in this gun violence intervention and prevention work. And so again, um, I can come back during public comments and share more, even humanize some of the work that we have been doing, but again, a special thank you, thank you for this opportunity, and this work continues, um, in collaboration. Um, I want to say one last thing, Pastor, thank you for saying what you said, it's really easy sometimes to only, um, and rightfully, we lift those that we have lost and the tragedies that are happening, and with that, please know that when we are on the ground doing the work, we're holding that close to heart and mind, and we are also holding that this work is so vital, even getting somebody moved, getting this done, whatever it is, that is, uh, building the beloved community that Dr. King talked about, which is, he said, is free of violence, and that is what we are working for, so we're holding both. So thank you again.
Thank you, Dr. Davis, I appreciate that. All right, Commission, well, first of all, I know from all of us here, uh, just a reminder that we had identified gun violence as a number-one issue for the Commission, and so I'm, uh, I know that sometimes we can be frustrated by the, the process and taking time to get things in place that we would like to have in place, but I do appreciate doing the work and trying to do it right, and thank you, everyone who's directly doing that work, who came here this evening, and I know that, uh, you represent a lot of work, but they're also individuals who didn't, they're doing the work that didn't happen to attend the meeting tonight. So I just want to make sure we're recognizing everybody in the community, uh, that's doing this important work. Uh, I appreciate that very, very much. I know all of us thank you from the bottom of our hearts, and, um, it is such a sad thing for me to talk about, uh, one of our responses unfortunately having to be, uh, funeral expenses, that's certainly not the place that we're hoping to make these investments, you know, we're hoping to be way in front of that, and I, and I know that's where we're trying to get, so, uh, appreciate, appreciate everyone's efforts and intent, and also, uh, city staff who, uh, COO Lamb, who spend a lot of time, you know, trying to make sure from our side that our partnership is working. That's really important, to really appreciate it. Uh, hey, Commission, you know, we do have a 7 o'clock meeting, which is coming up a few minutes, so I'm just suggesting we don't get into our second Committee of the Hall agenda item right now. It is on our regular agenda, it is the ninth sort of regular agenda item, even though it's unfinished business, we have a very packed agenda this evening with a closed session at the end, which will not be short. So I think it'd be good just to take a little break right now before we get into that, we'll certainly have an opportunity to, to talk about more of those details, you know, when that item comes up under unfinished business, if everybody's okay with that. Vice Mayor Cooney?
I just wanted to ask the City Manager if he would please follow up with the Reed Street situation and talk to, uh, Director Baker, see if we can help them out.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate that, Vice Mayor Cooney, for reminding us about that after this long conversation we've had. Remind people who are here, you will have the opportunity for, uh, to provide comments a little longer time period at our regular business meeting, but also even though there is not a dialogue, staff are in the room, obviously the City Manager is here, so when items like that come forward, uh, you know, notes are taken, people will follow up, and thanks for the reminder. Vice Mayor Cooney, anything else for the good order right now? All right, well then, our Committee of the Hall, uh, is, uh, I will be adjourning that, we are now adjourned, and a reminder, in a few moments, we'll be back here for our